Yep.
All right, welcome everybody. I call to order the Beaverton School Board Work Session for March 20th, 2022. We're going to start with a quick roll call of board members. So when I call your name, answer with present. The first person is Susan Greenberg and she will be joining us shortly via Zoom. Karen Perez.
Presente.
Next is Eric Simpson. Eric is excused tonight. Sunita Garg.
Present.
Ugana Enanyia.
Present.
Becky Timchuck and Becky Timchuck is excused tonight. And Tom Colette, I am present. So the first item on our meeting tonight is a mid-year update from Superintendent Dr. Balderas, and I will hand it over to you, Dr. Balderas.
So thank you, Chair Colette, and again, I really appreciate being able to provide a mid-year review of current status of the district and the implementation of the entry plan. It just seems like just yesterday we were at Mountainside in the community space talking about the goals for the year and doing some introductions. I think at that time, I think the board wanted to really focus on two big areas. One was the creation of a strategic plan, and the other was the passage of a levy, because it was 286 teachers coming off the heels of a very large bond, over 700 million that the community approved and the board did a heavy lift on that. So those are the two big areas, and I think part of the discussion also had to do with, you know, wanting to ease back into a, back to, I don't want to say the word "normal," but going back to a post-COVID world of education, and we were able to do that very well this year, I think, coming off of COVID, the COVID pandemic. We still have COVID in the area. I know we have some administrators out, I heard today, and actually saw today. So, but wanted to really start off with, this is a really engaging, supportive community. We have just a variety of great things happening in, across our systems, in these pockets, they call them pockets of excellence. And part of my entry plan, what I've seen is just what previous superintendents have said to you as a board, as a community. We have a pattern in history here in this district of having a system of schools and previous superintendents, previous boards, try to align it to be a school system. And in my 33-year career in education, since Measure Nine, Measure Five, Measure Five in 1990, we battled trying to figure out how to fund schools, because with additional funding, you can actually have a lot more autonomy on campuses, because you have more resources to be able to allocate to schools. With restricted funding, I think we have to be more systematic and more strategic in our initiatives. Those are the things that I kind of want to talk to you about a little bit, in terms of what I've experienced in the district. First of all, appreciate being here in Beaverton, coming back home into the district that educated my two boys. We were able to pass a local levy. Thank you, Dr. Perez, and the rest of the board for your lift. I know you took a lead on that one. And Sunita, también, Sunita, a lot of work, a lot of canvassing, and then the two board members that did a lot of legwork. And for the bond, you know, I know the whole board as a whole, but Becky Timchuck did a heavy lift as well, as being one of the leads. So Board Member Garg and Board Member Perez, just a great lift to try and get our community to really understand the need for the levy that provided, again, over 280 teachers into our school system. So in the strategic planning process, that's the meeting we were just at, before this meeting, and we're continuing to work with our leadership team and the broader community to bring you something here in the spring for adoption, and that's going fairly well, I believe. One of the goals that we're working towards is multilingual expansion. The next year, we want to really start off with William Walker, but also we're looking at also other languages. I know that we're going to be resending a survey out to community to make sure we have a solid data sets to ensure that we understand the want and need in our community. We do have a variety of languages. Again, we are a very diverse community. Fifty-seven percent of our kids are kids from diverse backgrounds, over 100 languages being spoken. We want to make sure that we provide that support for our students in an asset-based manner. So, and by expanding multilingual programs across the system and have them be more accessible, it's going to be able to really provide our students that need, especially if they do come from a home where other languages are spoken, because it really is an equity lever. It's a best practice equity lever to provide a specific number of languages. And I want to stop here, because we've lost a board member, and we no longer have quorum.
Let's pause for a second. I think it's a technical difficulty, and give Ugana a moment to come back. Okay, so Susan is on. Susan Greenberg, can you hear us? Uh, okay, thank you. Yep, great. So we've got Susan on the meeting, and then I think what happened just a moment ago is Ugana turned off her video, but she was still with us.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Again, so multilingual program expansion, something we're going to continue to do, as well as continue the work that previous administration and the board has focused on, which are preschool expansions. We're going to try and continue that, those expansions, specifically working toward the schools most in need. So, for example, moving a program from Bonne slope to Hazeldale, because it's a title school, more of a need, but also continue to expand, looking at a matrix where there is a need in the community. The goal is to have, getting this continuous working, continuing a programming across our system, which is going to support our students. And behavior supports, you know, I know we've heard a lot about our support on schools, and we're going to continue to do that, because the mental health of our students is, you know, essential for us to consider in funding and budgeting and staffing, knowing full well that we've been underfunded for a long period of time. You know, this next year's budget, we're looking at nine-nine. We are hoping for 10, three or more, and a reminder that the Call to Education model is 11, eight-nine. So we're a long ways from being where we need to be in terms of funding. And I can stop and answer questions from the board, as long as, whatever questions the board may want. And again, working toward continuance of adoptions. We have the social stage adoption. We're doing that this year, Unit One, Unit Two, and hopefully have already for for next year with Unit Three, so in K5, and then beginning secondary work as well. I'm going to have a list of stuff. I used to want to keep talking about lists, but I want to really talk about kind of the inward-facing things that we're working on as well. I think one of the inward-facing, that's not outward-facing, more inside the system, are looking at disalignment of programming. One of the things the board asked me to do, what do you think is needed here to be a better Beaverton? I think one of the things that's needed is, like I said earlier, we've been a system of schools and not a school system as much as we need to be, and we need the backbone of a K-12 assessment system and a K-12 intervention system. We need to have interventions at the primary, intermediate, middle, and high school level for both reading and math. And that's something that we're going to be working towards. I know Dr. Cordy and staff are working towards that. That's something that's needed. That's an essential backbone element to really support kids. And with that, we need to, so we need the assessment system to be able to identify where kids are at. And that needs to be, again, reviewed, assessed with all partners, our association partners, teacher-created or purchased, but then have an intervention system aligned to that. So if there is a student that has a math deficiency possibly in grade eight, well, we have an intervention for that student, and we have data to be able to place that student in that intervention. So again, just going back to a best practice system, what I'm saying to you is not anything new, it's not anything that's controversial, it's just something we don't have here. We don't have a K-12 assessment system, so we don't have the data to be able to put kids in an equitable manner into interventions that they need, at the primary, intermediate, middle, or high school level. So that's something that's, we're going to be working towards, as well as, probably the biggest issue we've been working on with Mr. Schofield over here is our budget coming off ESSER. We have decreasing enrollment, and we have to wean off of the federal dollars that are one-time dollars. And that's something that we're going to continue to do, not just this year, next year, before September of 2024, when it has to be, when these dollars go away. So looking over at Mike, but these are things that we have to do. Right now, we are working on some reductions at the district office, believe about 3% around district office departments, as well as reduction in whatever area we can. So we're looking at every staffing allocation addition to see if it's needed, and where our long-term alignment to sustainable funding for these people. We have this business process model. It's called the ERP. It's a resource planning system that's over 20 years old, and this system is a system that allows folks to be able to budget, understand where HR practices are, for example, your time sheets, your vacation, your personal days, but also, this is how you get paid. If you track some districts across the country that have really dated ERP systems, and there are some models right now that aren't, that I can speak to, but if they're old, they become very, very ineffective and become volatile in terms of how people get paid, make sure, and we want to make sure it's the number one priority, is people get paid on the timely, in a timely basis. There's no mistakes in your paycheck, there's no mistakes in your leave, and this is something that, with a dated system, as we have now, there's more possibility for that to happen. So we want to make sure that we're able to update our system, and that's going to take some time and energy and dollars. So, and also working on some standardization across the system, such as technology purchases and furniture be more centralized, so our folks can ensure that we have the right equipment for our kids. Going back to the budget, we, I've stated before that we're, talked to, again, our staff this morning, we're about 89.3% people in general fund right now, 89.3%, and that's above average in the metro area. I believe Hillsborough's 82.6, PPS, Portland Public's 83.1, Tiger Tewaldens 84.8. So we're above quite a bit in terms of other systems. So we need to make sure that we look at, you know, where are people, and making sure that we have people closest to the kids in the classrooms, but also with wraparound support, as much as we can support. So we're going to continue to look at that, to see where we have people in support for our kids in our schools, to ensure that we do the best we can. Again, these are just high-level things we're working on. I can go deeper into anything, but really wanted you, the board, to understand that we're doing quite a bit of investigations, but also looking at what else can we do to support our kids. I know I talked to a couple board members regarding mental health, for example, and can we look at it a little bit differently and look at outside resources, such as outside partners. I know I got a phone call, I know Dr. Cordy spoke to an individual community member that was working, that targets affinity groups, and making sure that we have, that they can provide a service as a CBO, as a community-based organization, to be able to support a specific group of our kids, affinity group of our kids. That's something that we're going to try to continue to have discussions and see how we can marry both our internal staff and community-based organizations to support our kids, because I think that's something that we can do and provide a little bit more resources, that's, again, possibly support not just our community, but our kids. So, are there any questions? I know I talk, I keep talking. I get paid to talk, remember? So, I could talk all night, but want to be able to have time to be able to answer your questions.
Questions from the board, and Sunita, Ugana, if you have questions, just raise your virtual hands and I'll call on you. Karen, I see.
Thanks for sharing all those pieces. There's a lot of work that's happening. One of the pieces for the budget, for myself, when I think about, you mentioned moving from a system of schools to more of a school system, and with the reduction of, what I heard you say was with the reduction in funding, that we need to focus on the alignment, so that we can actually afford, be more effective in the work. And as we do that alignment, I just, we have our SAM model for staffing, for the money we give to each school, and we've talked about that alignment of, like, is it, how many people are in, everybody has access to A, B, or C, and then our title schools can use title money perhaps to add on. And so, just thinking about with mental health supports and behavioral supports for some of our title schools and some of our schools that have higher need in those areas, if there's a way to align so that we're not taking away from the title money to add to mental health and behavior, so that it's still equal, but it's also equal in a way that maybe some people would have a 1.0 instead of a .5. And then if they want, they still have the mental health needs and the behavior needs and the reading needs and the, you know, the list goes on. But just thinking about equality in a way that's equitable, knowing that even though they have, some of our schools have title money, that it may not be .5 for everybody, but maybe some would be one and some would be .5 for certain things that are needed, and then still have that title money to address other needs that are, high needs that the students have. Something about that.
You're kind of saying no carve-outs, like in terms of, like, our own, and what I'm hearing is balance from you, making sure that there's balance, especially with the Title I schools. Is that what I'm hearing you say, Karen?
I'm trying to aim at that. And I know that our staff works hard to make sure that our schools are getting what we can give with the limited funds that we have and the decrease in the funds, but just wanted to name that.
So I appreciate that, and I think one of the things I can take back in terms of, if we need to look at the SAM model to see if we can put more weights in the SAM model to ensure, because what you're talking about is, the SAM model is an equity staffing model, and if we need to look at the equity staffing model to make improvements to it, to have additional weights, we can definitely bring back some proposals for the board, possibly. I'll get talk to Mike.
Following up with Karen saying, you know, I look at some of the high schools that might have less students, but they have more needs, because their students are, the families are socio-economically on the lower end, and I worry about secondary schools not getting their needs met, because they're a smaller school, and there isn't that same kind of Title I for high schools. So I just want to ensure that our students get their needs met in the secondary, as well as the primary schools.
No, absolutely. So just making sure that we're really overt in what, how we staff. So I think that's something we can even present to the board down the road, in terms of just how we staff and revisit the SAM model with the board, to ensure that, you know, how we got there. And there's little, I'm learning a lot about being here in Beaverton, so there's Little SAM, Big SAM, and those are just not brothers. So those are a smaller group and a bigger group that involves more association partners, and I can provide something for the board in terms of just what that looks like, and what different iterations that Big SAM and Little SAM have gone through.
So I have a follow-up question, and I'll. Thank you. I'm thrown off right now, people. Looking at high schools being the same, but knowing that there's high schools that are losing population, is it possible within those high schools that, even if they have the same model, that maybe there might be some other entity within their high schools that could use the space? So like, less students there, more opportunity for other programs to be in those high schools, is that something that's a possibility?
I think anything's a possibility. I think it depends on space and what that could look like, because there's a lot of school within school models that we have. You know, we have, you know, I think one school, when I arrived here, I had roughly 90 kids or so, and had a staffing, was heavily staffed. So I think looking at different program models for different school sites, but it's school within school models are always something that we can consider, especially with decreasing enrollment. And right now, again, our high schools are where, we actually have steady enrollment at our high schools, where we're seeing some declines in enrollment, or the K-12s, the primary years, and as our demographics look toward the future, is it's going to be continued decline over some time. So our goal is to create more opportunities and more of these magnet-type of programs to really try to attract more families into the system. So that's one of our goals for some of this. So we have a lot more language opportunities, a lot more aligned CTE pathways, for example. You know, our goal is that we're able to bring back more of our kids that maybe are not currently, are being homeschooled, or are maybe left for a bit, that make our schools more attractive. So to your point, I think there's a lot of opportunity out there for some magnet programs across our system. You know, for example, I know that we have waitlists for ISB, we have waitlist for Acma. You know, can we look at that and say, hey, do we have a different program that's like those programs to attract more kids? I know that there's pros and cons to everything, because you're taking some of the kids maybe from our comprehensives into these programs, but at the end of the day, it's about meeting kids where they're at, meeting their needs, and they're all our kids. I think that's the one thing that, for consideration, and I think that would allow us to maybe bring back more of our families if we've lost them for homeschooling during the pandemic.
Karen?
With the different pieces you mentioned, like multilingual expansion, preschool expansion, behavior supports, and mental health supports, the social science adoption alignment, CTE programs, I'm wondering if those are included in our strategic plan? So I'm just so curious, I want to see that, to make sure that, you know, if those are things that we're moving forward on, those are things that are in our strategic plan as well.
They will be, and I think that's part of the board discussion, in terms of what we focus on Year One, Two, and Three, because we can't do everything Year One, because everything costs some money. But one of our goals, and I've been saying this really loudly publicly, is the three areas that I'm going to continue to focus on as a superintendent, and make my recommendation for budgeting purposes, are multilingual expansion, continue our pre-K programming, which the board and previous administration did a phenomenal job of looking at that. And it's not about how many, but the quality. We have to make sure, everything I talk about has to have quality, because we have to have the very best program, the best, very best multilingual programs. And I think, you know, what I've seen from our multilingual department, it's going to be the best in the Northwest in terms of the rollout, how we're doing it, because it's really research-based and really intentional, as well as our pre-K programming, make sure it's the very, very best programming for our kids. And CTE alignment, you know, I talked to PCC last week. We met with Portland Community Calls last week regarding how do we better align to have fluid access for enrollment at PCC and have our kids fill out the financial aid forms on our campuses. So in my dream world, every one of our seniors would be able to have their financial aid forms filled out, completed on our campuses, and then have automatic acceptance into PCC, and then automatic, and working with PSU, so they have a local package if they want to. You know, Phoenix Union has this right now, with one of their local universities, done in, they're done in Phoenix, Arizona, where it's, you kids, you know, Phoenix Union High School, it's one high school, 20 high schools in Phoenix, and they have this automatic, and their superintendents, I know, is one of the things where it's an automatic through-line. So kids in Phoenix, they have their financial aid package, and they have automatic admittance, they qualify, and that just provides, that eliminates a barrier for kids. So the question that I know I'm working with staff on is how do we eliminate barriers for kids for post-secondary? Because post-secondary also doesn't mean an AA and a BS or a BA. It means a certificate program, maybe badging. They can go into the workforce. You know, there's a lot of, you know, education's changing and careers are changing. So how do we make sure that we look at all these programmings for kids to make sure that we get them to where they want to be? I know there's a question online too.
Sunita?
Yeah, thank you for all the information that you're providing us. It's very helpful. I heard you say that there are programs where we have waiting lists, like ISB and Acma, and you're looking into growing those programs. So in, what do you foresee? Do you foresee the growth in those programs in the next year, the year after? How do you see that? And how big is the demand?
I, that's a great question, and I think this is a multi-year solution. So right now, we have, for example, Acma in one location, you know, kind of looking at, can we have a similar program or a like program on the other side of our district, much like ISB? We talked about ISB being right now in a currently kind of a dated building, is one of the questions from Susan mentioned, can we move a program into another school? That's a possible, and we could do a lot. We just need long-range planning to make sure that we have space for the growth, because again, and also, again, these are a lot of our own kids. So if we open up a program, another secondary program that's very popular, like Acma, there's going to be a reduction at the high schools for, and so there'll be less, there'll be more space at our current comprehensives. So I think we also need to be really conscientious in terms of what that looks like in the rollout. So.
So the planning is not to that stage where you can say that we're going to do it next year or the year after?
No, right now, yep.
Not right now, okay.
Exactly. So I, and that would be something that we present to our school board, to you as board of directors, to ensure that, and our community, to make sure that it's something that can be sustained over time as well. So this will be in front of the board, not right now, but again, it's an idea that we're talking about internally in terms of, can we have additional programming? If there's a need for programming, right now it seems like we're not meeting the need, because there's waitlist. So how much can we provide to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our kids? Because if there's, like, for example, 200 kids that want to get into Acma but can't get in, or ISB can't get in, well, there's a want. So can we either do that at our comprehensives or in another program? Because there's a want to get in those programs.
Ugana? Ugana?
Yes, thank you for all the information you shared, Gus. So this is a follow-up to Sunita's question. I'm going to ask this question before I ask more questions. Now, you mentioned that students are on a waitlist for the ISB program and the Acma program. Why is the waitlist happening? Is it due to space?
Yes, space.
Okay, so you also mentioned that we can develop a new program if there is a space for that program in a different, in a different school or in a different space. Would those programs still retain the name, Acma, ISB, or is it going to be an entirely different program that replicates the same type of services offered, the same type of education offered in ISB and Acma?
So thank you for that question, and I think what we would do is look at all the possibilities and bring you some models for consideration, because I know there's school within school models for certain programings that we can have right now, and looking at, you know, what's the attraction to these programs, and can we provide that attraction at our local comprehensives, or does it have to be a separate school in itself? Because I think some of the times is, a school has, every school has its own culture, and some kids want to go there because of that school culture. So when I go to Acma, it has a certain school culture. If I go to Westview, different culture, Southridge, different culture. So some kids are attracted to the culture and also the academics. So I think the goal is to look at what the kids are asking for, and seeing how we can deliver on what the community and our students are asking for within our school system.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Karen?
For me, all these ideas seem great, and again, I just want to go back to making sure that they're in our strategic plan, and that we have a long-range plan, so that we can, you know, be transparent with our community and our staff and our students, and have that voice of our community as part of the process. I know they have been a huge part of the strategic planning process, so I'm still, I can't speak to that, because we haven't seen the whole plan yet, but I look forward to seeing that, and just making sure it's, all of our dreams are connected to that strategic plan and the long-range planning.
So I'm a big believer in schools without walls, and I'll explain what I, when I talk about schools without walls, I believe we get stuck in this model of education in the United States, where, you know, you belong to this high school, this middle school, this elementary, and this agrarian calendar, this Carnegie unit, where we have X amount of hours to fulfill a Carnegie unit, which is really, really dated. So this is me and my. So this is me and my soapbox a little bit. So I, I believe Beaverton is leading in, in terms of what we're looking at for proficiency, education, but like, you know, do kids know what we, what we're teaching them? And, but also, this agrarian calendar's always been a bother for me, you know, I, being a former farm worker myself, is I don't see a lot of kids right now working the farms anymore as what, as they did years ago in this area. Because in Hillsborough and Forest Grove, when they worked a lot of the nurseries. So looking at different models for kids and schools without walls also is be able to share kids across campuses so that if we can't staff, uh, for example, an IB or an AP calculus teacher in every high school, can we have a manner using the technology that we have to be able to offer that, that class maybe at, uh, Sunset High School, but kids from all the high schools or a couple of high schools can attend with that class via technology with an assistant? I know Tennessee has a different, I mean, so I'm just talking to a lot of different superintendents and just looking at ideas to how we remove barriers for kids. So I think that's one of the things that Dr. Cordy's working towards as well is what are the ways that we can utilize our current technology to remove barriers to provide more kids' access to core content across our mid-sized district?
Susan?
Well, I, just hearing this just make, brings, uh, my, uh, joy to my ears, just so you know that. Um, uh, because man, I've been all about this for a long time. So kind of speaking to that, uh, I don't know how many years ago this was, but there was a, it was probably around 2014, there was a long-range plan that was done, Carol? And a lot of these things that you're talking about are in this long-range plan. You know, the, and I don't know if, if that's where that sits, but we have a lot of the, I mean, I don't know if it's the same, and obviously things have changed, but there's, some of it hasn't. Right. But the, some of the academic pieces of that is what I'm speaking to was also in that plan. Is that be, is that shared somewhere where like Gus, who wasn't here, and Heather wasn't here, they would see those documents? I mean, that's, yeah.
So something, so I appreciate that comment because we will look at everything that we've had before because again, what I'm saying is it new, but how do we, because uh, what, what COVID provided was an opportunity also. It was an opportunity we wanted, but it was an opportunity, right? An opportunity to really look at, so we were able to get technology into every kid's hands, not just here, but across the country, across the world. So technology is more prevalent now than it's ever been. And teachers and, actually all faculty, not just teachers, all faculty had more professional development on how to utilize the technology to delve into instructional practices with their kids. So whether you're a pair of, pair of one, pair of two, in across the system, you're classified, you're licensed, if you're an administrator, I mean, look at us having Zoom meetings now. We have, you know, you can have a, you can be virtual. And, um, so this is an opportunity for us to leverage our technology to really look at ways to again, be able to provide access and inclusion for more kids. And how do we do that? Because again, if I can't, if I'm a high school principal and I can't afford a section because I have only like seven kids that want to take that class? So in the old days, those kids would have to take a bus and go somewhere across town and miss another period to get to that class. Now, can we leverage technology to have a, another staff member present in that room where the kids are online with the master teacher in another building to be able to give them the credit that they need? So I think that's just, it, it's exciting to look at what the possibilities could be.
I've got a follow-up question for that, um, just in terms of like facilities goals and, and where we're headed there in the next couple of years. And I know that one of the things, um, that we were working on was, um, getting our buildings seismically sound so that, um, I think it's 2032, could be a little bit later than that. We, we have a, a goal of trying to get all of our buildings there and just wondering about, um, where that work fix, fits in with all of the other work that you?
So that's our bond work that led by, by, by Dr. Mead and his phenomenal department that's doing, uh, a lot of legwork on, on a couple of builds right now. So I know the one thing that this board has done in previous bonds is be able to allocate the resources to have, um, our buildings built to a certain standard. And that's something we're going to continue to do. The retrofit, I don't know, Dr. Mead, can, I don't know if you want to come up and maybe speak to the retrofit a bit off a mic so people in the audience can hear? That's okay?
Great, thank you, Dr. Mead.
Yes, great question, um, Tom, appreciate it. So we are continuing with our, um, work for seismic improvements and we're targeting, um, we refer to them as the parks, Highland Park, um, that series of middle schools in this bond, um, and still actively pursuing grants from the state to couple those with our bond dollars to stretch that even further. So for example, um, I'll use Mountain View as an example, we're moving forward with seismic improvements at Mountain View, but at the same time, we're coupling that with a roof replacement so that we can do that work all at the same time and ultimately save the district money and resources in doing those projects at the same time. And so that will continue over the next five years of this bond.
Dr. Mead, do you see any other big goals coming up on the facility side in the next couple of years or just thinking about that in terms of this, this bigger update we're getting where we're thinking future-focused here?
Yeah, this is certainly a conversation Dr. Valderras has had with myself and leadership team. Excuse me, in terms of where we're going as a school district, as you're well aware, our enrollment has dropped, uh, over the last couple of years, and so we need to engage in some pretty deep conversations with the school board about what that means, um, potentially consolidation in the future, and what does that look like for us as a school district as we're tearing down and rebuilding, uh, Beaverton High School as well as Raleigh Hills Elementary School? So those are conversations we'll need to be engaging in, in the near future. And again, looking at our high school, while our high schools still are full, as we look at those numbers across our populations across the district, we're going to start to see those numbers go down over time. So leaning into Susan's inquiry about, so should we be looking at other programs or others type, um, not programs, but schools, ACMA, ISB, and the sort, is there an alternative for those? Um, and that's certainly part of the conversation we need to engage with the board.
Thank you.
So in the future, you know, with declining enrollment, we do have space and there will be, um, an understanding because there is savings through consolidation. But that's something that's going to take a, a lot of community input, a lot of community meetings, and a lot of, uh, conversations with the school board. Because this is something that, uh, people move to locations because of schools a lot of times. So just making sure that we're very thoughtful, very intentional, and as transparent as we can be when we have these conversations.
Other questions from the board? Dr. Valderras, did you have more for us on the plan?
I just have a lot of detail that, uh, you know, that you've seen before in a Friday memo, um, but details regarding specific programmings. But in general, I think the strategic plan will drive everything, so I think it's really essential for the school board to take a look at that and look at, you know, uh, our recommendations and, and our funding for, what's in year one, what's in year two, three, and four, and five? Because whatever we put in, we have to be able to make it sustainable. We don't want to start something to not be sustainable, and I think that's one of the things that we've learned, every district is facing right now because of Esser being gone in 2024, September of 2024, is a lot of those things that were maybe programs or people, you know, they're struggling, every district's struggling to find a way how to keep a good thing going as long as they can, and what's the funding stream so to make sure it's sustainable? That's why I always advocate as much as I can, every time, I know this board does as well, is to continue to talk to Salem about appropriate funding levels. Because it's not, you know, when, when you have people coming to board meetings advocating for positions, well, we're advocating for positions too. So it's, it's not us versus us, it's, it's, it's really, it just make sure that we're loud about the need in our school system. Because I think that's the one thing that I've learned over the years is, you know, everybody that comes to you is right. Because that's their real reality, they're right. So how do we ensure that the people making decisions in Salem understand what the needs are locally? And, and I appreciate the board members advocacy in Salem and making sure that, uh, our elected officials who are, uh, working on budget understand the needs are in our schools. Because again, I think what you hear is, is all right from people. I mean, no, no one's going to argue that we don't need X, Y, and Z. The question is, if we have a dollar, how do we split that dollar? You know, if we have a dollar, I can't pay for a dollar twenty-five for its services. I think that's the dilemma we get stuck in, and especially when we use soft dollars. I think that's where we spend roughly hours a day talking budget right now. Hours a day talking budget, it's top of mind, and it's tough because budget, again, we talk about almost 90% of our budget's people, budget is people. Budget is people. And we take that very seriously because this is livelihoods, this is, this is, this is very difficult conversations. And that's why these, these are really personal because we want to make sure that we're doing the best to keep the people that we have working in front of kids. And when I say closest to the classroom, our classroom teachers, because I've heard that loud and clear from our community, that class size is one of the biggest issues that they want to continue to talk about in our district. And class size right now is good. How do we keep it that way?
And looking at it from the lens of we just had the levy pass and people are looking like, well, we just passed the levy, how could we be cutting teachers? You know, I, I, I could see how, uh, our community would be, you know, like educating that, you know, we all need to be going and writing letters to our representatives to, to say, don't, you know, fund us under 10.2 billion as a state because it's, it's not local, it's statewide that the issue is, and somehow we need to commu, we need to communicate that we need help from our community to get the message out there.
Well, thank you for that, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I think with that, we will, we'll end our, uh, work session on the mid-year update, and we will come back at 6:30 PM for a work session on discipline data, so.
Reminder, we'll talk more about, we'll talk more about that. We all know that students were impacted greatly by the global pandemic and the challenges that came from just significant times, time that was out of the school setting. We do continue to see more fights and physical altercations than we saw before the pandemic. The data that we're sharing with you identifies some areas where things have improved over the past year and also some areas where we continue to have work that we need to do. So it's important to, to celebrate those, those accomplishments and improvements, but it's, it's equally if not more important to also focus on where, where do we need to improve and what does that look like? We have done significant work, the team has, around student expulsions and you will see evidence of that this evening. And, and last year, we know there was a focus and, and understandable concerns about some of the, of the things that were going on at the middle level. Our middle schools have implemented Character Strong, the adopted behavioral health and wellness curriculum, and it is an important strategy to provide students with key strategies in regulating their behavior. And we're seeing evidence that that is making a difference. We've also really provided our building leaders with opportunities to engage in professional development and to collaborate and, and also to calibrate their approach to student behavior. This evening, we're going to start our time by sharing with you all of the efforts and care that goes into supporting our students. We know that you're going to have questions along the way and we want to hear those and we want to engage in a conversation with you about those questions and thoughts that you have. We would ask, our, our, our presentation, our slide deck is sort of divided into two parts. The first part is a lot of background, sharing with you the supports that we have in place. And if, if it's possible to share, to share, wait to share your questions or ask your questions until the end of that, that first phase, we believe we might be answering some of your questions as we go. So we're in an effort to be more efficient with our time, your time, we'd ask you to just consider waiting to ask your questions about that first phase at that point and then we'll shift gears and talk about the data and what we're seeing there and what we've learned from that. And so with that, I will turn the next portion of the presentation over to Mr. Struckmeyer.
Good evening. I have two parts that I'm going to share with you. One is the foundational ideas and beliefs that we have, that we work to instill in our administrators as they work with students and their families. And then our approach to interrupt harm and to address behaviors when they're problematic. So these are the, the ideas. We strive for equitable, student-centered practices around student behavior. And an important step is that we proactively teach behavioral expectations to all students and we emphasize practices that prevent problems from happening in the first place. And as a system, we're committed to knowing the whole child and supporting their growth and development. Relationships are at the heart of our work with students and non-exclusion is always our first response to problematic behavior. And each year, as part of our contractual obligations, all schools review student conduct plans with tiered supports for students. All adults also engage in collective learning about student behavior in order to better respond and to support all students. And equity is our collective work and learning is at the heart of what we do on behalf of our students. Next slide, please. So in our response to student behavior, our approach to intervention and support for discipline is based on a leveled approach. For example, bullying and harassment may range from unkind statements to a pattern of hostile attacks and our approach needs to be different based on that level. Our response to behavior must consider the context and the severity of the behavior. And the student code of conduct provides guidance for appropriate actions to interrupt harm and, and to support learning to prevent the behavior from happening again. Our approach to discipline is focused on restoring relationships and returning to the learning environment. Decisions to exclude students are a last resort and they're thoughtfully implemented. Parents and families are critical partners in supporting student behavior and we know for every behavioral incident, there is a child and a story and it represents the hopes and dreams of their family. It also represents the thoughtful care that our educators undertake to create safe learning environments for all of our students. Each and every incident calls for a thoughtful and meaningful response by educators. This takes time and deep knowledge of the individual needs of each learner. And we have a highly trained and very thoughtful group of administrators in our buildings. They are there to support our students, our families and staff.
Good evening. It's with great pleasure to be here tonight to highlight the work that we have done around behavioral health and wellness over the last 11 years in this district. So if we go ahead and start on this timeline here, if we look back to the 2012, 2013 school year, during that time, we only had, prior to that, we had three social workers in the district. That year, we reduced all three social workers. We had a significant reduction in counselors. We had no counselor TOSA. So we were operating in a pretty lean system with multiple teacher reductions happening at the same time. But through the support of the school board, our superintendents and the teaching learning department and the advocacy of our principals and our staff, we've been able as a district to really invest and look at the needs of our students from a whole student approach, looking at both the behavioral health and wellness needs as well as our academic needs. So if you look at this slide, it goes through to 2017 and some of the biggest things to think about is that in, you know, 2012, 13, we really had very limited support and had reduced our support around the behavioral side and the emotional side for our students. Then in 2014, 15, we were able to do a white paper research where we looked at the amount of behavioral needs that were happening in our schools. We had counselors and school psychs and teachers generate data around what was impacting our students and what was happening with them. So through that, we began, began an internal budget team addition where they were strategic investments in the district to support. And at that point, we were able to add some central office supports. We added five social workers. We added college and career readiness counselors and we implemented for the first time a BSD suicide prevention protocol. So through that work, we, from there, we have continued to add and grow the work that we're offering to students to hopefully reduce the behavioral needs and support the academic needs of our students. If we move to the next slide. What you'll see is that we had our biggest investment really start, or planning for investment, starting in the 2019, 20 school year with the addition of the student investment account in the plan there. We had a mental health task force. We had mental health focus groups and we had student success teams which are now, or we were starting to build student success teams which are now known as our behavioral health and wellness teams. So there was quite a bit of work that went in, in the 2019, 2020 school year to identify how we were going to address the needs, the behavioral needs of students. We had made an investment in student success coaches, but we still didn't feel like it was moving the dial to where we needed to be. So over the last several years and last year, I was able to present to you phase one of our behavioral health and wellness adoption, which we have put into place this year, which is a tier one, universal level of social emotional learning supports. And then that group has continued on to phase two, which I'm looking forward to sharing with you at a later board meeting, which we'll talk about tier two, so next level interventions, tier three and special education. Just like Mr. Struckmeyer said, we address behavior and discipline in a leveled system. We look at intervention, prevention and intervention in a leveled system as well. One of the other big investments this year that we've done, besides for looking at our Character Strong and Kindness in the Classroom adoption materials, we've added four and a half substance use specialist and a bilingual facilitator to directly help support our students who are at risk for developing a substance use disorder. So what I'm looking forward to, coming forward to, this road is not ending, it will continue. And we're really looking forward to coming forward with our official Beaverton School District multi-tiered system of support around behavior as we look at having a true plan for how we're going to support our students and gather data and assess students to maintain, to see how they are progressing. Next slide. So if you go ahead and you see this data that we have here, if you look back, you can see, starting that prior to 2021, 22, we had no behavioral data in terms of who was supporting our students, that intervention early, all we had was discipline data. So as you can see, as of this year, at the semester, we had over 8,000 students who were referred to behavioral health and wellness staff members. Those are social workers, student success coaches, school support specialists, nurses, school psychologists, counselors. It's a wide range of a multidisciplinary team. The other thing you can start to see is that ultimately, we did see a decrease in our sexual incident response protocols last year, but if we stay on track, we will have almost 190 sexual incident response, responses that take place in the district. We will have almost 230 student threat assessments and over 1,000 suicide screenings that we will be looking at. With the addition of our staff and then their, their integration into the school teams with their teachers, they've really been able to identify the students who need help and intervention and we finally have a system to track that. Next slide, please. So one of our next big updates was around substance use. I'll have you go to the next, oh, it's okay. Oh, no worries. Okay. So we changed, in the spring of 2022, we updated our student code of conduct, in particular around substance abuse. And at that time, we removed the requirement to suspend or expel students on their first offense. We felt like removing students from a trusted and safe environment to expulsion did not make sense for a first offense because we really wanted to work with identifying what the root cause of the substance use was. We're really, you know, trying to prevent substance use disorders. So we emphasized a health and wellness approach. And through that, we partnered, it was our first mental health partnership with LifeWorks Northwest in order to, we had a system when students had an offense that they also then had to go through an intervention diversion program, but it was just online. It was pretty independent and if you didn't complete it, then you would be expelled. So it didn't really get to the root of the problem or any of those pieces. And then if I was a parent and I couldn't afford a substance use assessment, then my student might get expelled because I couldn't do that. So we partnered with LifeWorks Northwest and were able to start sending students to them for substance use assessments. And we've been partnering with them again this year. So as I mentioned, we have four and a half substance use specialist and a full-time bilingual facilitator. And our bilingual facilitator, I just got to highlight, is a classified employee, but he has been able to work with a lot of our Spanish-speaking families and has been doing parent nights to talk about signs, whether, and symptoms of substance use, vaping, tobacco, marijuana, all of those kind of things and helping them. We've had over 300-plus referrals to our substance use specialists this year. And we're all, you know, we're not even, we're like halfway through the school year and we were at 300-plus. It's really about a focus on prevention and intervention where there is a staff member who's working directly with the student and three, using a curriculum and three different meetings and they bring the parents in on the last one to consult on what is happening. We are also then partnering with LifeWorks Northwest because we can do an initial assessment of the student and if they need substance use disorder, possible counseling, we can refer them to LifeWorks who then can get them in their system for help. And then we've also been partnering with other districts in the area and Washington County Department of Health and Human Services around the support so we can have a more robust traction as we're addressing this issue. As you know, we were one of the first districts in Oregon to implement fentanyl and, not fentanyl, but Narcan within our schools. And so we have a training program for our off, front office staff and we have Narcan in all our high schools and middle schools now. So if we look and we go on to look at our LifeWorks Northwest substance use assessment data, you can see a decline this year in our referrals there with the use of our substance use specialists. But what you can, you can see is that the students who are going there are being referred for an assessment for substance use disorder and in some cases are getting enrolled with LifeWorks Northwest. We are seeing supports needed at the middle school level and the high school level across the board. And so with that, we're going to move on to Dr. Meggs and he is going to talk about responding to student behavior.
All right. Good evening. Nice to see you all. Thanks for having us tonight. So I'm moving on to talk a little bit more about just how we respond to student behavior, how we support and principals support children when they're at school and when their, when there are behaviors that happen that need some sort of attention. And so I want to take a little time right up the top here to orient you to the student code of conduct. So this is the student code of conduct. It is online. It's a, it's a really powerful resource. And so I wanted to take a little time here tonight to just orient you to, to what is in the code of conduct and how it frames our work. It is, as Dr. Cordy said, it's a shared document that applies to all students at all times while they're a Beaverton student and it guides and frames all the discipline that happens K-12. The goal of the work in schools, as its specifically related discipline practices are to ensure a safe and respectful learning environment, that all are treated fairly and that there is consistency and that any discipline is done, is done in a non-discriminatory manner, to ensure that parents are engaged as authentic partners and that all school staff provide effective and safe teaching and learning environments. To this end, and if you look at the code of conduct, it says in the introduction, we know that successful disciplinary practices are grounded in a few core ideas, that they're explicit, reasonable, timely, logical, fair, consistent and developmentally appropriate, that we are both proactive and reactive. We include students and families in our work. We're responsive to individual differences among students and the context, that we ensure all students have the ability to gain and receive an education and that we address the needs of those who engage in misconduct, who are affected by misconduct and who, and the needs of the overall community. We also know that each time there is behavior that calls for some level of discipline, that there are mitigating circumstances that Mr. Struckmeyer talked about earlier. We think about the age of the child, the conduct, I mean, the context of the situation. Does the student know and understand what the rules are? Is there some other factor or disability that is impeding the child in their decision-making? When you look inside the code of conduct, you'll see that there are 38 described conduct offenses and for each area, there's a description that outlines the nature of the behavior offense and that each fence, offense, there's a range of tiered interventions and disciplinary responses. And this is what principals use, assistant principals use to, A, determine what is the offense and how am I going to respond to it? Within that level of response, there are four levels of inner responses. Level one is really what happens in the classroom. It's knowing each child by strength and need. It's meeting the needs of the child through their academics, instructions, engagement. It's knowing each child as a learner, providing the appropriate rigor, scaffolds and supports to build strong, independent and confident learners. It's that relationship that a teacher has with a child. And that could be anything from class meetings to kindness in the classroom lessons, really focused on what's going on in the classroom and that relationship. It could be at the school level about conversation and just really ensuring that supports are in place and that there's a focus on the whole child. We then move to level two, which is where more intensive support or intervention from administration or other outside classroom personnel needs to take place. This can look like behavior plans, check-in, check-out system, parent conferences, alternate activities for unstructured times, structured breaks, use of wellness rooms. Restorative conferences are a big part of both level one and two. There is the next level, which is three, which is around suspensions and level four, which is extended suspension and expulsion, which Doc, Mr. Bell is going to talk about.
Thank you. Tonight, you're going to hear a lot of the data shared with you, talk about exclusions, behaviors that resulted not in exclusion and behaviors that resulted in exclusion. And just wanted to make, clarify what we're talking about. We're talking about exclusions and particularly the difference between suspensions and expulsions because it's something that we find a lot of our parents and people sort of confuse them and mix them together. So a suspension would be anything 10 days or less where they're either removed from the school setting or it can include in-school suspension. And we have a growing number of schools who are trying to re-implement different varying degrees of in-school suspension and trying to be creative in their staffing for how they do that. And then we have expulsions and I'm going to talk a great deal in the next slide about expulsions and some of the changes that we've made this year, but this is anytime 11 days or more that the student is removed from the school setting. And I think that is where sometimes most people believe that expulsions are for a year. And so expulsions can be used as what we call a hard reset to do a number of different things, to look at different options, programs. And it is rarely for us, we have not done any that have been for a year this year. We probably would only do that if it was a statutory offense that required a year expulsion because we found that year-long ones are just too long away, away from the things and don't fit the model that we were looking for. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in our next slide. So we've had a couple of key changes this year that have made a significant difference in some of our data. And the first one is around our drug and alcohol guidance. And Dr. Meggs talked about the change, or sorry.
Dr. Hudson.
Dr. Hudson talked about the change in the first level of offense and removing the requirement of a suspension or expulsion. Well, the student code of conduct gives the option to suspend or expel in offenses to moving forward. What we have done this year is we have not considered expulsion until the fourth offense within one year and then sometimes the fifth offense. So trying to use a restorative treatment-based approach that creates opportunities of change, for change and improvement. And so really trying to utilize our substance use specialists in that process to, in order to help students make those better choices and, and create a safer school environment. The exception to that would be is when distribution is a factor, then that is going to move that up and that you get to level three and four a whole lot faster with, with distribution. But this is just use or possession for drugs and alcohol. The second sort of key bucket of change has really been around expulsions. Last year, the district used a group called CASE to consult on expulsions and CASE was involved in expulsions once students were up for expulsion. So students would be recommended for expulsion by the principal. It would go before CASE. CASE would look at it and maybe make some recommendations. What we found, as we started to review our process in this year is we were really armchair quarterbacking after it was too late. And we really needed those, those, that input, those ideas, those transformative things to occur earlier in the process. So we reformed the CASE process and it now is a consult basis prior to expulsion. And it's anytime, and basically the recommendation that we've given schools is anytime students have received multiple days of suspension, they should be brought before CASE for ideas around what sort of protective factors might be able to be, come up with or, or just all the different ideas. And so CASE is not a set group of people. It's actually a group of about 50 people who, and we pull a group of seven or eight in each CASE to consult on that particular case. And so it's a multidisciplinary team, comes from a lot of our BH&amp;W folks as well as administrators and other things. And they, and they focus on those options and try and create a path that interrupts those behaviors that are getting in their way of learning and possibly getting them to a place where exclusion is possible. And we've had a lot of success. We've had about 30 CASE consults. We only got this going about in December, early December, and we've had about 30 since then and had a high, high rate of success of avoiding expulsion or, or even significant suspensions with those students. So it's been a very effective tool. The other thing, one of the big things around expulsion is we're using it as a last resort. It is not, it's not something that is considered, just like we talked about on, on drugs and alcohol, we're not considering that till the fourth or fifth offense. In all things, we're trying to avoid expulsion. When we do get to expulsion, we're looking for the shortest term possible. And I'm a big believer that expulsion does not, should not be the end of education. It should be a reforming, a remaking, a hard reset. And we have had students this year who have been expelled, who have already returned to their schools and are ahead of where they were before. They're successful. So we look for the shortest term possible, whatever that looks like. That really depends where we are in the school year and where we are in the grading period, on where those sometimes make sense. But we are typically looking for the shortest term possible in order to get that student back in their, with their support system and with folks. The other thing that's been very successful with our expulsions is going to conditional expulsion. This is not something that we did regularly in this district prior to this year, but all except for one expulsion, the very first one of this year, have been conditional. And what that means is, is that every expulsion is for a set period of time, but students can return early, usually in the previous grading period, whatever the previous grading period break is, whether that's a quarter or semester, can return early if they meet the behavioral goals that is set as part of their expulsion, academics, attendance and those kinds of things. So if they meet those. And since we've started doing this, the troubling behaviors in our programs that serve many of these kids have gone way down our success. In fact, every single student who has been eligible to return on the conditions has returned early so far this year. And so, and all of our other kids are set to do that as well. We have some that are, can go back here at the end of third quarter, provided that they meet those conditions. And so we've had, seen a lot of success there and students and parents are very appreciative of that because it gives their students some very clear to work towards, very clear expectations around what we need them to do and build strong supports around them. One of the other things is we've changed sort of the process in which when we expel, prior to this year, families would be informed in the expulsion conference that they were expelled and they were getting transferred to Merlot and they were going to go to Alt Solutions is the current name of the program. Now, they are told that when, when they receive an expulsion, that they'll go and they'll have an interview. So now we interview the students and their family, talk about what their educational goals are and help them create a program that is more tailored to their individual needs. We have students who start do, doing a combination of job corps and community school, students who might do community school, students who might start looking at a GED depending on, on where they are in the thing, in their, in their process and on their transcript and their, and their progress towards graduation. So there's, and every student's plan is individualized. We move really fast through that. It's about a three-day process from the initial interview through some other interviews and by the third day, we have them enrolled and moving forward in one of those programs. And we found a lot of success in that so far. And so I, I know expulsion sometimes are, are problematic and we'll talk a little bit about the data around that, but I believe we have greatly improved our process and found ways to help this be a transformative place instead of the end of the road.
So I just want to take a moment here, why we wrap up this section, is that we work closely with schools and with principals in this work, that this is, thinking about discipline and how they work with kids every day is, is a big part of the role that principals and assistant principals play. And they work very hard to find that balance between creating a very safe, healthy school learning environment and ensuring that kids stay in school and get, and are there with their peers, interacting in the ways that we want them to. And so some of the things that we do to help principals over the course of the year, the one I really wanted to highlight is Article Nine, which is part of the contract. And in that is around having student conduct plans. And every school has a school conduct plan that is created in, co-constructed with staff, with teachers. And in that plan, it talks about the school's approach to student behavior, expectations, levels of support, how kids will be referred, how there will be restoration processes for notifying parents and that sort of thing. So that is a piece that as execs, we work closely with, with principals on and principals work very closely with their staffs on those as well to help frame what's beyond. We have the student code of conduct that says, here's how we're going to respond. The student conduct plans is how is we as a school going to work with our kids? How do we ensure that we're meeting the needs of kids in our school? We have leadership meetings. Those happen once a month. In this, just this one last week, we spent time looking at discipline data, talking with principals about what is the data telling you? What are your plans? How are you responding? How are you moving forward? We as execs do one-on-one meetings with principals. We're in schools. We're in schools every week. Every school has a school learning plan that you've probably seen, they're on the website. And those are around the pillars of equity, academic excellence, and collaboration. We have, excuse me, level-based calibration, so levels talking to each other so that there is strong calibration around how we're going to respond to discipline, excuse me. And then principals are also involved in professional learning teams. So of two or three principals who spend time in each other's schools, talking about problems of practice. So, and behavior and discipline weave all through those conversations. So excellent. That is the end of round one, or the phase one, and so open it up for conversation.
Questions from the board? Let's see, Susan?
So one of the things I heard in this conversation that really impresses me is like from last year to this year and the difference in terms of how you're approaching discipline in our district, and I commend you for that. So I'm very encouraged by this, so I just wanted to, that would be my comment. Then for those students, so my question would be, and Danielle, you might have covered it in the mental health piece, but for those students that are suspended and/or expelled, is there mental health support for them?
So the students, when they're suspended, one of the things that we work on is a re-entry meeting where someone from the behavioral health and wellness team reaches out to the student and family. So if I've been expelled for a behavior, so maybe I was in a fight or something, just coming back to school doesn't mean that that's not going to happen again, right? So the combination of our social workers, counselors, school support specialists, they're reaching out. And in cases before, you know, they come back, they're doing a restorative conference or something like that. So, and then there's a plan to support the student upon return so that we're proactive, you know, why did this happen? And then our students who are at community school, Merlot Station campus for an expulsion, have access to counselors and social workers and all of those people who are on site. Additionally, we have through our process, we have students who are exhibiting pretty extreme behavior that is a targeted threat. We have a Level Two Student Threat Assessment Team, which we work with our community mental health providers, our staff, sheriff's department, police, DHS, community mental health, to build supports for that student, kind of to problem solve, community-based.
But I'm sure, so I think maybe I'll ask it a different way. I suspect that our students have trauma in their lives, that they need different types of mental health support than necessarily, okay, you misbehaved and let's get you back into the system, that they might need like support in a mental health where they can talk to someone about, you know, more than just their behavior. Do we provide that kind of support?
So our behavioral health and wellness staffs provide short-term counseling with the plan to connect them with outside counseling resources. We can't, our staff are really to triage, you know, can we do groups? Can we have a kid come in and do a one-to-one session? Through our phase two and three, or phase two of the behavioral health and wellness adoption, we're actually looking at specific curriculum to teach those skills. But then the role of say a social worker is to help triage the student to the outside resources because as a school system, like we're going to be closed next week, right? And so we try to find either those therapists outside, or if it's a student in special education, we have a continuum of placement options that we, so we have some students who are placed by the district in day treatment if they need that support. So there's a wide range and continuum of services that students access throughout. One of the challenges that we have though is in Beaverton, we have a lot of students who have private insurance and they can't access counseling supports through the county. So trying to navigate with our insurance providers on that support is a little tricky.
Appreciate that. So, except it's really hard to find mental health support in general, and then when you have kids that are really struggling. So I appreciate that, Danielle. And then I wanted to understand CASE. I didn't really understand that at all, like what is CASE?
What's the acronym?
Yeah, thank you.
The acronym for CASE. So CASE is a multi-disciplinary team made up of school psychologists.
What does it stand for?
Oh, what does it stand for? I haven't even, can't.
Collaborative Alternative Solutions. Forget what you used.
To suspension.
Yes.
Collaborative.
Collaborative Alternative Solutions to Suspension and Expulsion. So there's.
We like acronyms in education. We like acronyms.
Ugana?
Thank you so much for your presentation. It shed some light on the disciplinary process for me. So I have a few questions now about CASE. I know that a few, a few weeks ago, our community, some of our community members had issues with principals making the unilateral recommendation to expel or not to expel. So what I'm understanding tonight is that CASE, I may be wrong, that CASE helps in making that recommendation? Would that be a correct assumption?
Actually, so principals make a recommendation to expel, and then the executive administrator at that level makes the final decision whether to expel or not. The CASE team is involved in helping find the right level of supports and interventions prior to expulsion as students are, maybe have had multiple suspensions or just other issues and tries, is this another layer of trying to help schools find the different supports necessary?
Well, since the concerns that were expressed by members of our community is that it made them, they didn't trust that a principal should have that authority to make that recommendation. Is there a way to involve CASE earlier than the stage that they are involved currently? Instead of having a principal make that call, is there, where you mentioned something about a code of conduct being changed to remove suspension as the first, on first offense, is this something that can be done to the code of conduct, alter the policy in a way that the principal does not get to have that recommendation? Because expulsion is a big deal as far as I'm concerned, and I don't, I'm of the school of thoughts that the principal should not be making that recommendation.
So legally, so can we speak about the legality of who can make this decision? Because there's, there's actually a statute to this, Ugana, regarding who actually has to make the decision by statute. Can we, can we speak to that? It can't be a teacher. Teachers don't expel. Teachers cannot expel legally. There's some ramifications. It has to go, I think you're talking about the process to where it gets to. The principal, it has to be, you have to have an administrative license to recommend an expulsion. You have to have, an administrator has to make that recommendation. It can't be a group of licensed staff members that aren't administrators. That's by statute. I think what you're talking about is what's the process before he gets to that recommendation? And I think maybe can we speak to the process used, say if an infraction happens at a building level, what's a process that goes up the chain of command? An administrator always has to make the recommendation. There is no leeway on that.
Hi there, I'll try to speak to that. I don't know if it's Board Policy JGD or JGE, somewhere around there, there's a board policy that guides us and it's based on the Oregon revised statutes. And what that looks like, as we look at, there's sometimes one event where an expulsion discussion might happen. Principal might consult an executive administrator and say, here's the situation, here's the background, we are thinking that the situation is so severe that we are recommending expulsion to interrupt harm. And as an exec, it's our responsibility to guide them back to the student code of conduct, to ask questions about, show me the evidence that there was progressive discipline. We are not moving to expulsion unless we have evidence of that. Or show me the level of the harm with this one incident. So that is in keeping with the board policy, and it's a responsibility that we as execs take very seriously. The other examples though will be behaviors that persist over time when we've tried to interrupt harm and we've continued to move to more robust responses, that the level of suspension is more days for the next time, or the third time, or the fourth time. And in those cases, that is exactly the role of CASE, to interrupt that continued ratcheting up of more exclusion and to say, let's consider counseling, let's consider supports for the family, let's consider doing some things creatively with the student's schedule, have you, their thinking partners. So those are the two sides to answer that. I hope that was helpful.
Yes, that was. My next question is, how are our students, first of all, are students aware, are they made aware of what the rules are, of what the code of conduct is?
Yeah, so students and parents are provided the code of conduct. I know in previous districts, it's something that's sent to every house, and a lot of times parents have to, or students have to sign the code of conduct and submit back to the building. So it's kept on record. I think I can let staff speak to what we do actually here, but every family receives a code of conduct and typically student and family have to sign off of that code of conduct. So, but I'll let staff respond.
I can take that. All of that is accurate. I would just say that as part of our annual notice to parents with the verification forms, part of that is communication about where to find it and for families to review it. And when parents complete the form, there is a box that must be clicked that shows that they have reviewed that. Our work with students in schools is done through advisory, generally at the secondary level, where there is guidance provided about that to students in that setting. And it's coupled with our work around the foundations of character strong at middle school. I can speak about that.
Okay. My last question, I promise is going to be the last, except if something else comes up to my mind. So my last question, you mentioned that there are 4.5 substance use specialists. What is the point five? Is it a part times S U S or what makes up the half, the 4.5?
When we were working to hire, we had staffed five substance use specialists for the school year. We struggled to find substance use specialists that wanted to work full-time. So that point five is a part-time person, and then we added the bilingual resource facilitator because none of our substance use specialists were Spanish-speaking. And we wanted to be able to have someone who could connect with our Spanish-speaking families. So we've trained that bilingual resource facilitator along with our substance use specialists, and he co-offers lessons to families and students together in their native language.
All right. Thank you very much.
Karan?
And I'd say, Ugana, this is the time you're supposed to ask questions, so it's okay to ask a 10. I got a 10 too. So in Slide nine and 10, when we had the roadmap, you talked about like, we worked in phase one and we're doing Level One implementation. And in 2023, we moved into phase two, and then we have a phase three that we're ready to implement as allowed, as time allows. So my question is around the funding for that. So when we started phase one and thought long-term about our implementation of phase one, two, and three, and the staffing and all these great amazing supports that our community is getting used to and needs, what was our long-term plan for funding phase one, two, and three?
So originally, when we built our plan, it was when we built our SIA plan, and at that time, we were looking at our student investment account and high school success plan dollars where to kind of carry that on. We have been really fortunate because right now, Washington County Department of Health and Human Services has had ESAR money that has come in. And then I've also been able to build a partnership with Kaiser, the Healthy Generations Grant. And so we've been able to get outside funding to help beef up some of the supports that we have so we can purchase them for longer term through those grant dollars to keep that moving along and to try to sustain through the 2025 school year. We weren't anticipating a decrease in enrollment like we are seeing, which is putting things, making things a little bit more tricky, but we're working to figure those things out.
Okay, so that's helpful. So using SIA Measure 98, our high school success funding for eight through 12, and then a couple, some grants as well?
Well, it was, it's K through 12, we were using SIA and high school success funds to fund our behavioral health and wellness supports.
The, but the high school success is only for eight through 12?
Right.
Or eight, yeah, eight through 12, but the other one's K-12.
Yeah, so SIA is K-12, yeah.
So with that, I was just, I'm thinking, when I was in Salem last week, talking to our legislature to try to get that 10.3, one of the things that was kind of an aha for me, and I don't know if I hadn't made that connection before, is that even though our enrollment is going down, the numbers, the students that are leaving, our students that didn't necessarily, in many cases, use these services that we are providing for all students, these intensive services. And so even though our numbers are going down and our funding is going down, the number of students that actually need those services is staying the same. And that's where we're struggling to say to our community, hey, you know, we know these things are important. We have a, you know, a plan to 2025 with the SIA money going down, or, and actually that whole integrated guidance money is all going down because of our numbers. The need is still there, and that's what I think our community is feeling, our staff, we're still doing our work, like we need, we need all of these people. But it's where we're struggling to see like, where do we fund these positions? And we need them to be sustainable positions. So another comment or question I had was on Slide 11, when we talked about sexual incident responses. Last week, Dr. Baldetis and I and a couple of staff, Pat and Tatiana, our equity directors, met with our student advisory council, or Beaverton Student Advisory Council. And something that they brought up, because I see the incidents have gone down, which is great, but what our students have mentioned there was that they're still needing more support. And I know we're just talking about decreasing funding, but what they named was that they know we're all mandatory reporters, and they're struggling to be able to tell us when sexual assaults happen because they, they described our train, our, our health education and our Aaron's Law, being some examples, they felt like for high, for juniors and seniors, they need more realistic examples, and somebody's riding a bike and somebody takes your bike and that's not okay. So they felt like the examples didn't quite fit the reality of what's happening at high school juniors and seniors. And that when they had questions, they were scared to ask because they knew we were mandatory reporters. And so they asked for us to look at ways that maybe it's we team with outside agencies or something. I know Portland Public looked at, they contracted with outside agencies that are not mandatory, that worked, it's all complicated because there's all lots and rules and laws, but that students had a place to go to get questions answered about like, is this a sexual assault or is this not, without it being a mandatory reporter, reporting situation. We also talked to them about the importance, if they knew about something, to please let somebody at school know so that we can support them. And they felt supported once they knew, but they just needed a space to ask these questions with non-mandatory reporters.
Well, in terms of, so this year, one of the things I failed to mention was our curriculum learning enhancement. So one of the things is we created a scope and sequence for sixth through 12th grade that includes Character Strong, Addie's Act, which is suicide prevention lessons, Aaron's Law lessons, and have kind of a whole scope and sequence that we go through through the year. One of the things I can do is it might be worthwhile to have our health TOSA reach out to those, you know, health teachers to do some surveying of students to see if there's some things around Aaron's Law that maybe we could update in there, so I can take that feedback back to them. In terms of outside agencies, so we had started, not that they wouldn't be mandatory reporters because if we had a student who came forward who was questioning sexual assault, we don't want to be the investigators. But we have explored opportunities to work with like the Morrison Center and other facilities to have them be able to use our facilities. The complicating. The complicating measure around that is that they have to have enough students who qualify for their service for billable hours. So we keep trying to figure out a way to work that out. And I know Portland has done some of that and been successful, but it's been hit or miss. It really depends on the school and a space. But it's not something that is, something that would prevent us from continuing to look into that as additional providers.
And they also asked about the, the need for, like, places for, and in this case was, there were several, I mean, these were students from all of our high schools, like multiple students. And they asked for a space for them to learn about, like, date safety, dating safety, or relationship safety. And talked about, like, maybe adelante mujeres or something, could have groups at school where they can come and have these discussions and just learn. You know, parents can opt them in, or soon, however that all works. But they really were asking, like, almost begging for more information, so that they can make more informed decisions about their relationship health and just, just health, their physical health in general. The, I can pass it off to somebody else, that's a question before.
Sanita?
Now, thank you for all the information. There's a lot here. My question is, like, when I look at that graph going up and down, with the budget cuts and stuff, is there, is this being looked at? Like, there are some things that has improved for sure, like when I look at the numbers. And I don't know about phase one and phase two, this question needs to be held for later. Let me know. But, you know, when I look at, like vandalism has gone down, sexual assault has gone down, bullying and harassment has gone down, which are really things that we should, you know, feel good about. That yes, things are working. So when, but then there are things that has gone up too, and we need to improve those. So when we look at budget cuts and stuff, how do you guys kind of do the calibration on that? Like, do you look at what needs to be improved? And then the second part of the question is, like, when we look at up and down, we didn't have any social worker. So does, at, at one point, we didn't have any social workers, we didn't have student coaches, and now we have all this support system for our kids. Can we, do we have data even to look at for that far back, that, that many cases happened? And now that we have the support system, things are improving, like that far back? Do we? So if somebody wants to talk about that.
Sanita, I'm just gonna jump in really quick. If we have questions about the discipline data, there's gonna be a second section where they're gonna go over that. So I think if you have any questions about that area, we just hold them until we get to that area, so we can all look at the data and then ask those. But I know your question kind of touched on both areas, so I will.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can, we can hold off and wait till the.
I can talk really quickly, Sanita, regarding calibration of the system. Again, like I mentioned earlier, is we have a lot of autonomy that's occurred over the years in this school system. And we're working on calibration to ensure that we call something equally across the district. For example, I know Mr. Bell worked on, believe it or not, tardies at their secondary to be consistent, maybe absences. Which, you know, we're in 2023, and we're still talking about consistency in terms of what a tardy is. So, and so the data over the years, if you have a school that maybe has very little tardies, and there's a school with a lot of tardies, I think you take that with a grain of salt, that they're not calibrated. So I think what we first need is calibration of expectations across what it looks like across all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And then we look at the data after we calibrate it to ensure that we're talking apples to apples, like we're, we're comparing the same. If not, we can have one school look great, but actually, when you look under the hood, it may not be so great, or maybe it's, it is great. Again, we don't know if it's not calibrated. So I think that's what the team's been doing this year, and I'd let the team speak to that. But I think that is what I found coming in nine months into this job, is the lack of calibration across the school district.
I've got a question on an earlier slide, the one where you had the BHNW referrals. I noticed that it went from, like, 3,400 or so to about 8,000 when you look from 2021, 22 to 2022, 23, and that's just the first semester data. Is that an effect of having BHNW people in the schools actually able to do the work that they need? You know, we're, previously, we're, we're not able to do because of some of the COVID issues?
I absolutely think that's the case. If we think about the first part of last year, our, we had, were, first time we were fully staffed with our behavioral health and wellness teams, they were trying to figure out how they were gonna operate. And most of them were being substitutes in classrooms. So we have finally gotten to a point where they're able to meet together, they're able to talk about kids on a weekly basis, and they're able to track their data. So I think that has an impact on it. And we're able to see how many students they're actually serving, because they're not subbing for the third-grade teacher.
Karen?
I guess my last point or thought was around what Dr. Baldetis just said, around that calibration. And I appreciated your approach to providing professional development. I heard you talk about collaboration amongst the teams, and then also that calibration. And I think that consistency and that consistency in reporting will be very helpful, so that we have accurate data. I remember back when I was actually in the building here in Beaverton, and the state put out the law that we, we needed to decrease expulsions and suspensions. And all of a sudden, everything dropped. And in some of our buildings, it was like, we're not doing this anymore, and that's it. But we didn't have the professional development and the collaboration and the calibration to make our numbers accurate, and really to be doing best practice for our students and to have those supports. So I think it's incredibly important to have that calibration and that PD and that collaboration that you mentioned, in that supportive way, so that as a system, it doesn't matter which school you're at, you're gonna have the same support, you know, similar supports, and that alignment is really critical.
Any other questions from the board? I think we'll move to the, the next part, which is semester one discipline data.
Thank you, Chair Colette. We're going to walk through the data in the report with some supporting slides. And the organization of that will be a little bit out of order. But Patrick and Ken are gonna talk about the most frequent violations by outcome and level, and kind of look at where we were this year compared to last year at this time. Then Ken Bell's gonna do a little bit deeper dive into the expulsion data that he talked about earlier. And then I'll try and cover the rest of the report, looking at kind of the summary-level data of how we're responding to conduct violations by level on pages three through eight. And then talk about, really keep our focus on equity and the discipline outcomes by race, ethnicity, and level, as well as the exclusion rates by race, ethnicity. So we'll do the front end and the back end of the report. So I will turn it over to Patrick.
So we just wanted to just take a moment and just highlight what are the five most frequent behaviors that were resulted in suspension at the elementary level and then at the secondary level. So at the elementary level, these go in order, so multiple violations. And what that means is that there were two behaviors that caused the suspension. That might say that was fighting and bullying, or something of that nature. So that is why it's, it says multiple violations. And then you can see what the next four there are in order. And as was mentioned earlier, I think it's really important to, to talk about the fact that at the elementary level and at the secondary level, that suspension is not the first place people go. There is a lot of work that has been done prior to a suspension happening. And that is plans made, safety plans, communication with families, outreach, all sorts of things to do to the best effort to keep a kid in school. So if they have a physical altercation minor, as you see up there, the first time that happens is not resulting in a suspension. There is a lot of other work that is done. And there's work done in order to ensure a transition back to school, both for the child who is suspended, but also for anyone who there may have been harm caused. And so Ken is now gonna talk about semester one for secondary.
Thank you. At the secondary level, we have a change in our first place, so to speak. Last year, fighting was the most frequent thing we saw in semester one of the 21-22 school year. There were 206 instances last year. That is down to 189. And so for each of those fights, the definition of fight is a hostile physical encounter between individuals. And so those are frightening experiences for students that are participating, students that are witnessing for our adults. And that reduction represents a lot of hard leadership work. So I want to commend our building leaders on that. I also want to draw your attention to physical altercation minor. That is different from a fight in that it's language or behavior that disrupts, excuse me, a confrontation, tussle, or physical aggression that does not result in injury. So sometimes that will look like a verbal interchange, that it, it can be somewhat violent, but there are, there's no physical contact. Those can be equally traumatizing. And again, the reduction went from 142 instances in semester one of 21-22 to 116. So in middle schools and high schools, we're very excited to see that becoming less frequent, those two areas. And dangerous drugs, we had one less case in semester one this year than last year. But as Ken Bell was explaining to you, whereas in the past, we would have seen dangerous drugs as something that resulted in prolonged suspensions and possibly expulsion, those are now things that through our behavioral health and wellness teams and substance use specialists, those can be interrupted quickly, and plan to return to school with the supports in place. So those are some, some big trends we're seeing at the secondary level.
Wanted to talk a little bit more about expulsions by looking at our data. And we, we had 10 expulsions in our secondary schools for a semester out of a little over 19,000 students. So we have to be a little bit careful of how we talk about these, because it's a small enough group that there is easily identifiable information there. So, but we just listed what the most frequent codes were. So these were, these were essentially all of the, the 10 expulsions were, came from these five. And the other piece of our expulsions is that we are requiring the homeschool to stay in contact with students while they're expelled. So there's a monthly check-in meeting where they're checking on meeting their goals. And they have a trusted adult that they and the team have helped choose that comes and visits with them at least once a month, and some are doing it more often than that. And keeping them connected to their school, having those conditional expulsions shows them that we want them to come back. And it is, is a big difference on, on why that's success. But we feel like 10, and just to talk a little bit about the process. So when a principal, so an assistant principal often is, at the secondary level, is, is often the one who deals with the behavior. They then would bring the, the, the incident to the principal. They would discuss whether an expulsion might be warranted. The principal then would call their executive administrator. We would have a conversation, where in that conversation, Construc Meyer and I would ask questions like, what are all the interventions you've attempted? What are the things that have been done? What are the protective factors in place? I mean, there's a, a lot of conversation over, over, these are some of the longest conversations we have with principals. And if we feel like there's enough there, and usually principals kind of come to their own conclusion in that conversation. It's, it's rarely, rare where I would say, I don't think you should do an expulsion here. Usually, as we talk through it, they'll be like, I think there's a couple of things we can still try before we look at this. And so even though we've had 10, we've probably had 30 conversations about expulsion and only done 10 of them. So I, I see that as success. We, we'd love to have zero, but I also feel like 10 is a really positive move in the right direction.
Next slide, please. All right, I'm gonna take us home. So you can see in the summary slide, which is covered on pages three and four in the report, that it, both exclusions and non-exclusions are up at the elementary level, while non-exclusions and exclusions at the secondary level are more stable. And Sanita, you made some great observations that I was going to share, that you noticed at the secondary level that physical altercations, bullying and harassment, disruptive disorderly conduct are down. Ken already mentioned that dangerous drugs, there's no change. And we're seeing an increase in, I don't know if I'd say less disruptive conduct violations. So tobacco use, unexcused absences, tardiness, closed campus violations are increasing at the secondary level. Flip side, at the elementary level, where both non-exclusions and exclusions are up by about a third, what we're seeing increases in are physical altercations, bullying and harassment, disruptive disorderly conduct, which is the exact opposite of what we're seeing at the, the secondary level. So recognizing there's some, some good things happening, as Sanita mentioned, I just want to clarify this data, that we're talking about responses to incidents. So one thing is that these counts are the number of conduct violation incidents by a student. So if you have two students fighting, that's gonna be counted twice in here as two incidents. And I would just go behind the numbers a little bit. These 3,600 violations, which leadership has responded to, were committed by 1,860 students. So basically, about 5% of students enrolled have this first semester had some sort of conduct violation. And 2/3 of those students have had one, whether it's an exclusion or a non-exclusion. So intervention by school staff and leadership are hopefully preventing the recurrence of those behaviors. Next slide, please. Discipline outcomes, in, in the report, you could see 22, 23 compared to 21, 22. But overall, and you could infer it from the last slide, that rates of exclusion and non-exclusion are up for all racial, ethnic groups, except for Asian students at the elementary level. It's interesting, if you look, and we talk about the, the disproportionality of either exclusions or responses to student conduct violations, you don't see that disproportionate, or if you see disproportionality at the elementary level, what are the groups that are most involved? Native American and Pacific Islander students, which are our smallest populations. Think about, there are 100 Native American kids at the elementary level, at the secondary level, and about 200 Pacific Islander, Native Hawaiian students. The third highest bar in that group, both for non-exclusions, the teal, and then the exclusions, green, are white students. And are actually, our students of color have lower non-exclusion and exclusion rates when you think converted into per 100 students. I probably should say another factoid when we talk about the kids. Three students at the elementary level, one white, two Latinx, two male, one female, two first graders, one third grader in our district. Those three students account for 11%, almost 100 conduct violations in the first semester. 70 responses by administrators that did not result in exclusion, and 27 that resulted in exclusion. So there are an over, over, overwhelming majority of our students that have no conduct violations at all, and I think we need to recognize that. And also recognize the frequent, consistent intervention as we try to change behavior of students, and how difficult that is for some of our students. Next slide, please. Secondary, the rate, the good news here, I'm sure Sanita saw, is that the exclusion and non-exclusion rates, both for Native American students and non-exclusion rates, both for Native American students and for white students, actually decreased from semester one last year to semester one this year. But the rest of this story is very familiar. We have significant disproportionality at the secondary level, both in terms of, uh, responses that are non-exclusionary and exclusionary for our Black and Latinx students in particular. And that's all I'll say about that. And then let me get to the final slides, just reinforcing this message, and this is on page nine. The good news here is, uh, this is a comparison of student exclusions from first semester last year to first semester this year. And so bars that are going down, like for Black students, seven point nine percent of Black students were, had an exclusion the first semester of last year. That's down to five point three percent this year. Uh, you also see a decrease for Native American and multiracial students, not unfortunately for Latinx and Pacific Islander students. And then the second chart in that report gives the, kind of a picture of the risk ratio. So the good news there is that our Black students in the first semester of twenty-one, twenty-two were four point five times more likely to be excluded from class, whether that's an in-school suspension, an out-of-school suspension, or an expulsion. Four point five times more likely than white students. We've reduced that disproportionality to two point nine the first semester of this year. This is a huge improvement, but still our Black students are being excluded at three times the rate of white students. I think the other thing, again, it's just some first semester data, but that's exciting if you look at that bottom chart on that page, is that Native American students, it's a factor of twenty percent higher than white students, and multiracial students, it's ten percent higher. Anything that's a factor of one point three, the, um, oh dear, and I forget the citation. Dr. Perez, can you remember? Is it Office of Civil Rights, or maybe it's the research literature? As a district, you're trying to get all groups within that one point three and lower range. Oh, even better is our Asian students who are referred much lower than our white students. So that's all I have, or our team has on the data, and we would be happy to answer questions, except if I could take twenty seconds and turn my computer back on. Cause I did want to address Sanita's question about, uh, the long-term trends. And Dr. Perez kind of gave some of the state context, is that we, there was an effort to try and reduce the, um, amount of time kids were out of class. And you see that in our data, not as much in the percentage of students that are excluded, but in the number of days. So back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, which is the first data I have, which I think, Tom might remember, we started tracker, Susan, we started tracking in the strategic plan measures at that point. We racked up over thirteen thousand days. And then the, that number of days went down, went down, and then it started to come back up. And I think that was due to, um, this is pre-pandemic, started to come back up, uh, changes in the state context in terms of the availability of more, marijuana was more available, you have the rise of vaping, and schools need to respond to that. So you see the days start creeping up. By two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we were still lower than twelve thirteen, but it was starting on that, starting to approach the number of days in twelve thirteen. Then the pandemic came, interrupted our data. But even last year, we had six thousand six hundred days, so roughly half the days of twelve thirteen, which I think really speaks to the work that, um, this team has described to you to try and keep kids in school. At a time when, Susan, as you've talked about repeatedly, the mental health and the behavior challenges have really skyrocketed during the pandemic. So it's really been a, a team effort of school leaders and school staff to try and respond in ways that change behavior and keep kids in class. So Sanita, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, Sanita, I was gonna turn it over to you first here, so if you have a follow-up on that, or anything else.
Yeah, no, thanks for the data. I have a follow-up question on, uh, what, uh, Dr. Valderez was talking about calibration. When we think about parents, you know, the only way that they know that their kid may be in violation of a code of conduct is through the code of conduct that's out there. So when you're thinking about calibrating it, you know, like, I was looking at tardiness, which has gone up. And, and to your point, yes, it makes sense. One school may be following one definition of tardiness, and the other school may be following another, uh, you know, way of measuring, uh, why a student is, or when a student is tardy. So are you thinking about changing the wording in the school, the code of conduct, so that it, it relays that communication, there is clarity in communication between parents and what the school is, school district is looking for in the code of conduct?
I think code of conduct's always yearly reviewed. And so in terms of what, what that looks like, a turnover to staff, in terms of the process being used, in terms of the count, in terms of what wording's being, being stated, uh, to school administrators, and any changes to the code, Ken?
I can take that, yes. So we do have an annual, um, review, and it is, um, an opportunity for anybody in a building, or anybody that works centrally, to identify areas where they're seeing problems of practice, or they're seeing trends that are going in the wrong direction. We use all, all that feedback, um, and we look, um, sometimes there are legal updates as well that we need to consider. But in terms of the example you were giving, um, with calibration, many times it is simply unpacking language for staff, um, that interact with our students, and to make sure they have a clear understanding of those expectations. So that's our starting place always, to make sure we have a clear understanding before we, we edit words. And if it is not clear, then it's incumbent on us to, to, to make it clear. I also think it's important to, to note that for many of our administrators, that, um, time to calibrate, to learn, had been crowded out by disease mitigation for the past couple years. And they're very hungry for this, and very appreciative of, um, our focus on students and, and supporting their positive behavior.
And also, oh, go ahead.
Director Garg, I, I just want to just add as a follow-up to that, the, and it was referenced earlier in our presentation, but the work that this team and others have been doing, uh, for one, in our monthly leadership meetings, really hosting conversations and talking about, uh, the data and working on the calibration. I mean, the, those conversations are happening on a regular basis across our district in various ways. And it's, it's encouraging, um, the, the results of those conversations, and we've, I think, really only just begun.
Yeah, also like, I think, like, when I look at lewd, lewd language and profanity, like, it went up by three hundred and fifty-seven percent. And that, I mean, it just is more, the number looks so high. It, maybe in, how, how, how are we letting the parents know that these are the expectations that we have from our kids? That when they come to school, uh, other than code of conduct, is there any other ways that wherever the things are going higher, maybe we can relay that to our parents or the, uh, you know, caregivers of the students, that these are the expectations, but what we have of kids? And, um, so.
Well, I, I think one of the things that particularly at our elementary schools, we've had a focus on parent nights. So our student success coaches and social workers and counselors have been coming together at different parenting nights. So you bring parents in, sometimes for like a literacy night, but then they'll do, uh, you know, strategies for working with your students on these kind of things. So I know that mo, a lot of our elementary schools have been really doing that. And then some elementary schools have been, uh, having kindergarten nights, parent nights, because we know where we really need to target is our incoming kindergarteners and s- setting the expectations for those parents. So I think as much as we have a code of conduct, I think our schools have offered, used family nights and other nights like that to help with the parenting skills that parents may need to be aware of.
And I would just add at the elementary level, I think, a lot of things that principals do, they do principal chats, which creates spaces for parents to come, and there's round table sort of conversation, question and answer that happen. It also happens at the classroom level with, through teacher newsletters and conversations with parents in conferences, um, the communication they might have with parents about child's progress. So it, it happens both organically and formally, uh, at, at the elementary level, and I would assume the same in the secondary.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm sure this data is gonna help you guys to make that communication even better. So, thank you.
Corinne, and then Ugana?
Um, I'm thinking about the number, uh, well, I'm looking specifically at the non-exclusion incidents in secondary around unexpected, unexpected absences and tardiness. And thinking about what, like, I was looking in our code of conduct, and if I think about unexcused absences, it's like, at what point do you call, cause it looks like you're, we're calling a truancy officer, right, on, on the families? And so I'm just trying to understand, in this incidence, what does this mean? Like, I understand like tobacco use and those disciplinary actions taken, but unexpected, um, absences, that's on the parent, cause we haven't called it in, um, whether we know or not, right? So I'm thinking of my own kids, I'm like, I forgot to call today, so I gotta call, right? Like, um, cause they're homesick, or, or for whatever reason. But what is a consequence to our students for unexcused absences? And at what point do we, does it become like a, an incident?
Hi, I can, uh, try to define that. So an unexcused absence would be anytime that a student is not present, and we don't have an explanation that meets the state definition for that. Generally, any sort of interventions should not, um, we should not be excluding students for unexcused absences. That would be a starting place for all of our work. And that usually that unexcused absence is communicating something, um, either needs of the family or personal needs of the student. So we try to work proactively to do that. We have site-based, um, support for those students, but I'm not aware of any, um, use of truancy services through the E S D that is going on in our buildings. We found that to be quite a costly, um, solution, and one that really does not engage with families in a way that we find to be very productive. So we're gonna go back at the secondary level to work directly with students. And at the elementary level, it would be more frequently be work with families about supporting their needs.
I, I would just add that at, at the elementary level, it's about the family outreach. It's about conversation. And I know that it, and it's not just a letter saying your kid is, is, has this many days, but it's about, I know principals will go do home visits. They'll call, they'll reach out, they'll try to understand, what is it, the root cause of the absenteeism? And the other part of it is to really help parents understand that when school starts, the learning starts, and there's important things that happen from the moment school begins. And I think sometimes parents say, oh, you come in and you do, nope, we're getting to work, and we have to help parents understand that. And that's a big part of the communication that's done.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, like, there, it's right up there with, you know, tobacco use. It's all like, why, why are the unexpected answers in tardiness right here with discipline information? Cause to me, it's like a, a different issue. Like, we gotta, what you described was, we're gonna work with the family, we're gonna work with the students, try to figure this out. But it was just interesting. I don't know why I hadn't made that connection to it being like, it makes sense that we need to follow up with students, and there has to be some conversations, but it was just, um, the other part that kind of struck me was the three students with a hundred incidents. And in my mind, like, we want, um, to change that behavior and keep them in schools. Like, that's what we do, that's why we're here. And so when I hear three students and a hundred incidents, um, and knowing how much it goes into each incident for that, for the schools and staff, I wonder, um, about like, that collaboration and support, and what we do to support those buildings, to support those students to be able to stay, but also know how much time into each, each one of those incidents is an intense incident, and takes time.
So I can speak a little bit to that, maybe I can have Danielle speak a little bit about this as well, in terms of the identification process, especially when they're K one-twos, when they're littles, come into our system, they transfer in, and maybe what the, what the process is for identification and support for kids that maybe need some additional services?
One of the things that happens oftentimes in Beaverton is we have students who come to our schools, a kindergarten, first grade, second grade, who may have never had any pre-kindergarten experience, or didn't have consistent medical supports, where they would have been flagged as being a student with a disability, and then picked up through Northwest Regional E S D, or another early intervention, early childhood special education program. So many of the students that most likely, I don't know who the three students are, are students who were not receiving special education services, and may have never had ex, any school experience prior to showing up. And then that school team has to go through the process of demonstrating that the student has a disability, or identifying a disability. And we can't rush to that. And so what often happens is we'll have a student who comes, and for, you know, six to eight weeks, we're trying to get to know the student, and they are struggling. And so the team does a lot to wrap around. I, you know, I hear it often, where the student success coacher, the social worker, the counselor, the building principal, you name it, is, you know, taking turns to intervene with the student, and they're building plans. And then from there, we potentially get a consent free evaluation for special education, and then that can take up to sixty days to complete. So there can be barriers to getting medical statements to the student, there could be barriers to the student attending school. And so all of that time takes a while. So we start to see, really, that first semester, some of that higher numbers of explosive behavior, and then at a certain point, mid-year, they're, you know, starting to receive those special education services. One thing I would want to prepare people to understand is there is a bill out there, Senate Bill eight nineteen, I believe. And, um, it would prevent abbreviated school days for, for students. And so what I suspect, a lot of our schools work really hard to maintain kids in the school for the full day. And sometimes, though, suspension has a result because the, the student has injured, severely injured their peer, their teacher, their principal. And this, the staff member needs to use, you know, the principal has to use suspension, not to punish the student, but so that the staff can recalibrate and build a plan. Because if you don't have time to consult in the day, you're gonna just have a student who comes back doing the same thing, or we can't try something different. So the process takes a while. It, I know it's frustrating for people, but ultimately, I would say we're all, also very cautious of labeling a five-year-old with an emotional behavioral disorder. We want to make sure that it isn't a trauma experience. We also have a lot of wonderful families in our district who take in care, kids from foster care. We have a lot of foster care homes. We have a lot of students who have had very traumatic, you know, life experiences. And so teasing out, is it the, that behavior, the results of the fact that they were, you know, living, you know, supervised for the first three years of their life, and were glad they made it, or that they truly have a disability? So those teams really have to flush those things out.
And in no way am I saying that they, you know, we should speed up the process. Um, and I, I taught kindergarten for eighteen years, and, and know, um, sometimes parents were able to support or provide a bubble for their student, um, in a way that we can't in a classroom of thirty. And so that, there is a lot of learning. And I remember having those, um, transition meetings for students that were coming from an intensive pre-K program into our Kinders, um, and attending those meetings, trying to figure out, like, what supports can we put in place when they come into kindergarten? Some stayed at our school before, in that process, some did not. There was a lot of coordination between the pre-K programs and the K, kindergarten teams at the schools, the sped teams that had a lot of meetings, a lot of paperwork, kindergarten teachers, and trying to mitigate those spaces, and, um, really looking at all those factors you mentioned. Did they have interrupted education? And now with COVID and those impacts, um, also them not being around other students as well as, has impact. But it just was impactful to think about. But it just was impactful to think about three students, a hundred, I mean, the student must be exhausted in the first place. But, and then that law that you mentioned that's coming up, it'll be interesting to see what happens with that one.
I would just add, one of the, a great investment we have done is offered pre-K and the continued expansion of that. Because what we are able to do is get to know those kids when they're four and before they come through our doors. So we have a plan. We know what we need to do for them. And so that has been a key intervention and that strengthening of our relationship with the Early Childhood Special Education Program that we're really, those, those students who are coming in already identified are much more successful because we know how to intervene. But then we always have a couple of kids who come in that we have no idea where they've come from and we're just trying to figure out how best to support them.
Thanks to our teams for all that work. I know it's a lot of work.
Ditto. Um, Ugana?
Yeah, thank you so much again for, um, for your report. And, um, when I was reading for this meeting, I saw two reports in the pocket and I read the second one. I don't even, if I'm allowed to ask questions on that second report. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, Ugana.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm looking at, um, the report that says exclusion from class by race slash ethnicity compared to white students. And the goal stated here is to reduce this proportionality, uh, to have odd ratios for all students to be one point three or less. Uh, so my question is, how, how are you proposing to, to reach this goal?
Well, I think that our answer is many, many things. It starts from, one is principals have this tough balance they're trying to find every day between school safety and supporting their students towards, um, success and their future. And I think that we, um, we're doing a number of things. For example, all high school administrators, middle school administrators or elementary administrators looked at this data at our leadership meeting last Thursday and talked about it, devised individual plans about how to address it and look at it with, with their teams and their schools. But it also starts with, with a, a district equity plan. That when I look at the students that I've approved for expulsion this year, I can tell you that almost all of them have extensive discipline histories that date back as early as third grade. Um, and so it's a systemic approach to trying to find, and it's everything, it's our B H and W teams, which I think is something that we didn't talk a lot about tonight. We talked about how case intervenes. But really before case ever gets involved, most of the time, those students have been, come up weekly on our B H and W teams and different staff members are trying a number of interventions. So I think it's a multifaceted approach to try and build a system that supports all students so that we don't end up with the outcomes that we don't like in some of these charts.
So I could talk a little bit on that in terms of what, just expand on what Ken said. It's really talking about these personalized education plans for every kid, kindergarten all the way through grade twelve and looking at these supports for these students. That's why the multi-tiered systems of support, the tier one, tier two, tier two and tier three systems that are consistent across the district are so important for us to, to really, uh, have in place and be able to have data. You know, um, this is the only district I've ever worked in that I've heard the term data shaming before. I've never heard that term before in my professional career of thirty-three years, data shaming. To me, data shaming is something that needs to be looked at because to me, uh, I don't know how a school district functions without having information to inform the decision-making. Every system needs information. What you have in front of you is a lot of data. They're just numbers. They're just numbers. Now, what we do with those numbers, I think that's the one thing that, uh, we need to have time to be able to have space for teachers, for administrators, to be able to look at those numbers, to be able to provide supports for kids. So we need to have data that is, um, valid and reliable, first of all. And then we need to have time and space to review that data. And then we need to have the interventions to support the kids using that information. So all that is, what I just said is a system that we currently do not have in Beaverton that we are looking towards. We have pockets of excellence. To be really clear as well, we have pockets of excellence. So individual leaders are utilizing their own space to create these microsystems. And we don't have the macro system of a school district. So principals are doing the best they can in their buildings with their staffs to create these microsystems of support for kids. So to, I know that's a long-winded answer, but it needs to be systematic, systematic. It needs to be K, pre-K through grade twelve and beyond. And we need to be doing it together, not in separate islands. Because I think that's, that's, I guess, the secret sauce of a school district is we're, we're all looking at information, but we have a places where we can support kids with that are consistent. And that's something we're gonna, that's part of the strategic planning process, part of what we need to have. So like in pockets of excellence, but having plans that start at a very young age, like Ken said. If we know kids have some struggles academically or behaviorally at the younger grades, what are we doing to support them and their families and how are we sharing information across levels? Because student transitions are very, very difficult between elementary, middle and middle and high school. So, um, I think that's one of the things that we continue to strengthen as well. And I'll let the rest of the team add anything.
Well, I'd just say, one of the things in terms of the behavior part of it, one of the things that we know is that the longer kids are with us, the better that they do. And so that's because we get to know them. We get to know them well. We get to know what their needs and their strengths are. And oftentimes we talk with the principals at the elementary level, the, the, the child who is really struggling in kindergarten and first grade is sitting in their fourth and fifth grade classroom doing great. And so we really, that's the part of the work that we do to come to know kids and know them well. But it's also how do we come to know, uh, our own beliefs and our own biases that help us determine how we're engaging with kids? And so that's part of our work as well.
I would, um, I just wanted to add, thanks to Dr. Bridges and his team, we provide quarterly behavioral health and wellness data by race and ethnicity to our buildings with guiding questions. And so we've had a couple of schools and like, uh, Dr. Baldairis, you talked about data shaming. We send them individually to the schools, but we've had staff who've said, is this wrong? Is this bad? And our response back is, well, how does this data make you feel? How do you feel about it? So really trying to get people to start saying like, who are the kids who are coming through us and, and our system and why those kids? Why not other kids? And it's, it's been a change, I think, for those teams to really be able to just see it in a really user-friendly manner. So I want to thank Dr. Bridges' team for that. They've been great.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Karen?
Um, and I think that that's the right approach, right? Like, the more we can talk about the data and to have our, each school team be able to share, like, here's, you know, it's, it's two kids that are a hundred, you know, situations in my building or, um, and, and then that brainstorming, because you talked about not only the professional development for them and their teams, but also that collaboration. Like, this is a shared approach. Just because it's happening at your building, um, and it's not at mine, we got to, let's brainstorm. Like, let's brainstorm and work together as a team because these are all of our kids. And we want to keep all of our kids in our schools. And what might be working in your school could maybe work in my school. And it's like, in education as a teacher, you have, you keep building up your toolbox. And sometimes you forget you have a certain tool in your toolbox until somebody tells you like, in collaboration, oh, there's that one. I'm like, oh, yeah, I have that one in my toolbox. I just haven't used it for a while. So I think that, I love the approach of collaboration, um, transparency in the data and then owning your data. Like, be, be able to explain why. If you can explain it, great. If you need help, reach out. Like, let's, let's collaborate. So I thank you for the approach of calibrating collaboration and P D that you mentioned.
I think that the time piece is going to be something that's needed because I think, you know, we don't have the time embedded right now in our system. And please correct me, if, if that's, that's one of the biggest issues I see in this school district. We don't have time to be able, the space to be able to do that as much as we want.
And to Dr. Baldairis' point, um, that is, that is absolutely right. And we have, again, pockets of excellence where building leaders are, are getting really creative to carve out that collaboration time for progress monitoring and looking at data and having those conversations. And it's not consistent. And even just today, in a strategic planning conversation and large, um, meeting, that is a theme that is definitely emerging. You'll see more about that as the strategic plan is, is shared further.
Susan?
So there's a, I tell you, I'm soaking everything in today. Data is always a little harder for me to wrap my head around, to be honest with you. I have a question about, um, is it possible that, you know, we're looking, here's Dr. Baldairis talking about systems, having a system where we have a student, you know, a young child that's been expelled or suspended over a hundred times or whatever, that there's other students like that that might behave similarly, but they are not having the same result in terms of being suspended, that there's a different way that they're at different schools or being, uh, disciplined? And so that whole consistency, so you see one kid like that, but there's another kid behaves the same way. I don't know if we know those cases because they're not being reported. So that's one thing that hit my head. And then I have another question that is nothing to.
Su- Susan, I think that that is the crux of our work about our own, um, approach to, to behavior. There are times when behavior is evident and we can all agree what we're seeing. So there are times like when a fight is a fight and we have evidence that they were fighting. And then we have other times when, for example, um, behavior is reported as being defiant. And so we have all sorts of shades of gray there. So that, that's a key area for us of interrupting implicit bias and making sure that we are really growing the skills of our administrators around that. And then again, it's the calibration that at secondary schools, um, we have multiple administrators dealing with behavior. It shouldn't depend, if you saw the assistant principal or the principal, how, how that behavior was addressed. And then we have the, the reliability between buildings that we can predict more uniform, um, approaches. It's also important to note that one of the things we unpacked over the last year was that we had disparate, um, reporting going on. So school A would put everything in synergy, our student information system, and school B would hold it all behind a closed wall and only put the most severe things in there. That made it really hard for us to do honest work. It made it really hard for us to look for trends and to actually interrupt harm. And so, um, executives have been crystal clear that it, when, when behavior needs an office intervention, when it's level two, our expectation is that we see that. And I think some of the things we were celebrating earlier are particularly more, um, worth celebrating when we realize we actually have more robust reporting this year. And yet in some of our categories, those behaviors are less frequent.
And then I have a question because expulsion, eleven days. Or did, do those students have to re-enroll in the school system? Because I know that eleven days or more, that that is like an issue for a kid that misses more than ten days. They have to re-enroll in school and is that the same for a student that's expelled or is it different?
So can you walk them through what we do?
So any, any student that's expelled is, is never unenrolled unless they choose to leave our district. They would be transferred or even cross-enrolled to two programs at once. Most of our students, um, that are currently expelled go to either Alt Solutions, which is located, uh, or they may do interim home instruction, they may do flex. There's, and some of them are in multiple programs in order to best serve their needs. So they, um, they're never unenrolled. They are simply transferred from one of our schools to the other.
So we legally have to provide an alternative placement for any student that's still our student? I can talk really quickly about objective and subjective because I think that's something that's been talked about. That's one of the, that, that is the work. A lot of the work is there. Because subjective is that defiance, loitering, disrespect, those things that are really subjective. Objective, um, you know, they're, they're, did the kid do X and everybody saw X? Did the kid bring a weapon, showed it with intent? Again, that's even a little bit subjective with the intent. But it, it gets, I think that's the work ahead in terms of the continual calibration across our system between objective versus subjective. And what is making sure the discipline is, is, is calibrated to ensure that we're being, that's the equity piece a little bit in terms of our system so that we don't have, in that bias training that we have, in terms of making sure our administrators are all calling something the same thing if they see it. I think that's, um, I can keep going on and on about this because this is something that's a nationwide trend. This is just not happening in Beaverton, Oregon. This is everywhere. And, uh, that's why you have bias, and, and I use the middle school boy and girl example often, is middle school boys get disciplined at twice the rate of middle school girls. That's a national stat. Usually that's, it hasn't changed for thirty years probably. So middle school boys get disciplined at twice the rate as middle school girls. So why is that? I mean, really, so that's the bias is, or, in, in, in terms of how do we work through that? And it's, you know, I spent most of my career at the middle level. So I can tell you, I have my, my sense to it, but that's the work we have to do as a system. And I think we're on our way. We have been on our way. I think tonight, we, the boards heard is some progression toward where we're going to head by staff. But it takes the whole team. It takes time. And we've been fortunate enough to be meeting with principals and assistant principals together all year long to talk about this. I think that's the first time that's happened in a long time. So it's making sure that we do it as a team with the board involved in, with these updates. And we fully expect in the fall, when we have a new board, to be doing the same presentation again, but going deeper.
Karen?
Yeah, I was going to say, that would be great. So, um, get our second semester information with our, with the new board or when it's ready to be able to share and keep learning together. Um, and so that we have that consistency and, and check with, with you all, um, our systems. And the one thing we haven't talked about and it just, it's a quick, I'm glad we haven't seen any, um, with expulsion and suspension, expulsions, um, last year we saw a couple as a board. And the paperwork was really inconsistent and not well-filled out. And so I'm glad, well, we haven't seen any, which is hopefully because we're trying to, you know, but just wanted to name that, um, for the paperwork and that process, making sure that that's consistent as well as you're looking at the other systems. So that if there was a case that came to us as a board to look at, that, um, that paperwork for sure is consistent and well-filled, filled out for families and for us.
Sunita?
Yeah, so, you know, like when, there, there's a, two data that's provided for the secondary school level is the exclusion rate over three hundred percent by ethnicity and by schools. And by ethnicity, I, I'm glad to hear that, you know, implicit bias training. How, how much implicit bias training do teachers get? Like, is there a requirement or what, what happens there?
So, um, I, I can't speak as much to what that professional development has looked like, um, up until now, though I know, I do know that it has been rigorous. But as our Office of Equity and Inclusion has been working diligently, um, um, to learn and understand the modules that have been recently created by O D E, those will be the, there are multiple modules with several, um, modules and clusters within them. And this is one of the primary areas of focus in that professional development. And we know from, um, hearing from Dr. Baldairis and knowing the importance of that professional development that that is going to be the number one, um, professional development, um, series that we ensure is, um, offered to all, that is required for all staff, um, in the coming years and rolling that out. And that is a key part of those, um, series.
Thank you. So the next question is, when I look at the, um, data for the schools, there are three schools that stand out, which has more than three hundred percent of exclusion rate. Community School, Meadow Park and Mountain View. How, how do you guys plan to look into that to make that data a little bit better or, you know, more consistent? to make that data a little bit better or, you know, more consistent with other schools?
I could start a little bit on that. So thank you for the question in terms of, I don't know if we ever want, you know, you gotta be careful about the terminology, making the data better.
Yeah, I guess.
Because I think, because the, the.
We don't want the data to be better. We want the.
The schools to be, to be safe environments for all kids so that all kids feel included. So I think it's how do we create a more sense of belonging and inclusion at these schools? And what is, what can we do to support the school culture and environment and, and staff to ensure that we create that, that environment? I know that when I first arrived here, and I heard this from community is the two middle schools where there was a great amount of concern were Meadow Park and Mountain View. I, I had heard that prior to my arrival. I'm not hearing that now as much. I'm not hearing that now as much. So some things happened there this year to cause more of a, of, of an environmental change, culture change shift maybe on the campus. I think there was a, quite a bit of transformation in terms of staffing as well that occurred on those two campuses. So my long-winded answer to the question would be is, we need to continue to ensure that we have best practice modules in those schools, support those school leaders and teachers, and also support the parents. I think parents are a key part of any discipline behavioral contract. The parents are guardians. So making sure the parents and guardians are aware of the situations and making sure we continually work with students. Because again, being in the school for so long as I was, is there's, this is not all kids. This is typically a handful of students that need some additional supports. So how do we work to identify those students to ensure that we provide the supports that we can as a system to support them interactions? Because these students that are in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, before long, they'll be in our high schools. And also I think we need to revert back to what we said earlier is these kids are right now in our elementaries. So what are we doing at the elementary level to prepare these kids, support these kids to ensure that they understand our behavioral expectations, work with their families before they get to any middle school? I think that's something that we need to continue to work on. So my point, this is a K twelve dilemma that we need to really tackle and work through.
As an add-on to that.
No, no school district will never not. So I wanna be sure we're clear about that. And that's just the way the reality is in our public schools. We have forty thousand kids.
All right. Thank you for an excellent presentation tonight. We appreciated the deep dive here. And I'm sure like Dr. Baldairis says, there's more to come in the new school year. So I hope everybody has a good evening. And I think the, the board won't be coming.